3:00 PM. Before we get started, I have a message I want to share with everybody. There has been discussion recently in the news and social media regarding the potential development of a homeless shelter on property in Dallas by Church of the Park. The development that could be under consideration would require a conditional use permit to allow the shelter to be located in the industrial zone. The conditional use permit application, if filed, would be addressed through the land use process, which includes the opportunity for public comment, testimony of public hearings that would be held for that purpose, and all public comment and testimony concerning of the project must be presented at those land use hearings. The City Council will not receive public comment on the subject of the proposed project at this council meeting. Public comment on homelessness in general will be received, but comments on the particular project may be the subject of a land use application, which must be reserved for public hearings on any application that may be filed.
Mr. Mayor, if I could just amend that. Of course, the applicant, Church of the Park, said they may file an application under House Bill 3395, which is not a land use process. At this point, no application has been filed, and so we don't know whether this will be a land use proceeding or not, and so we are proceeding under the assumption that it still could be a land use proceeding, and so we will follow the homeless rules until we know that files is accepted.
Thank you. So the first item on the agenda is a roll call.
Council President Schilling.
Here.
Counselor Adams.
Here.
Counselor Berantos.
Here.
Counselor Briggs.
Here.
Counselor Collins.
Present.
Counselor Fitzgerald.
Here.
Counselor Jantsch.
Here.
Counselor Shane.
Here.
Counselor Verden.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Okay, would you all please join me in the plaid of the audience?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Next, introductions, recognitions, proclamations.
We don't have any mayor, thank you.
The next on the agenda is the public comment. Public comment, these are the rules. Please provide us with your name and address for the record. You have up to three minutes. It is your turn to talk and ours to listen. Please direct all comments to the mayor. The mayor will refer to staff for readily available information or for follow-up as needed. If amatory or la vela's comments will not be accepted, distractions take attention from the speaker. The audience, city council members, and city staff are asked to focus on the speaker during their time by being respectfully quiet. So I have some forms here that have been given to me, and I'm going to read them as they are here in the pile. The first one I have is Devin Jones.
Devin Jones, 1605 Southeast Barbary, also Harvest CrossFit 745 Main Street. So I know that the council and the planning commission are right now are going through some code amendments as far as the sign code pertains, and I'm proposing another thing to address or discuss while you're going through those amendments, specifically the size of a sign that's allowed to cover a window. So recently, our building, someone complained and was forced upon, one of the issues is the size of the sign. As it's written right now, you're not allowed to cover a window with more than, for more than 50% of that window. And our signs out front on Main Street, they serve a couple purposes. One purpose is to provide some privacy for the people that are working behind those windows. Also, it's really ugly back there, and so consider the irony of enforcing on a code that is meant to keep the city looking nice, right, but making it look uglier. So also, if you go around town, there's a lot of other businesses that may be benefiting from having a larger sign or covering their windows by more than 50%, depending on how that business is run. So I propose that we somehow allow for, or just eliminate the size of how you may cover the windows on your business, or create some sort of allowances or exceptions depending on the usage. Does that make sense? Is that reasonable? I got another minute. I'm trying to make sure I didn't forget anything. Yeah, and I think a lot of businesses or a lot of people that are enforced upon, their first like knee-jerk reaction would be like, hey, well, they're doing this over here and they're doing this over here. And actually, when I look around at the other businesses that do have more than 50%, I'm pretty happy for them. I think if that's the way that they choose to run their business, that's probably benefiting them some way. They're entrepreneurs, they're hardworking business people, and they're having to make these decisions based on the best way to run their business. So I would like to see just removing the size prohibitions, because as far as I know, we might be the first people that have been, first business that's been complained about. So these other businesses, they're doing a great job, they're just not following the code, and I applaud them for that. I mean, not, not, not like they're trying to get away from something, but I think they're doing a great job of running their business the way that they think that they ought to be run. So some sort of discussion on removing the prohibitions on the size of those, what can cover a window in their business. Thanks, guys.
That's kind of annoying.
Yeah.
There's always a learning curve.
Steve Pickering, 1895 Southwest Church Street, City of Dallas. Mr. Mayor, city council members, I want to apologize for my lung condition. It may affect my ability to speak tonight, but I'll make it very brief. Tonight's agenda list changes to the parking code, and some descriptions do not adequately fit some areas of Dallas. For example, my block would be almost four blocks long. Holman would be almost four blocks long. There are several areas like that. It needs to be defined better as far as what a block is. It's one of the things you're about to change in the parking code. The other concern I have is existing long-term RV storage of residents who have RVs stored either in their driveway or on their property next to their homes, or in my case, in front of my home at this time, although I'm changing that to another location down below on my property. I would like to know what you're going to do in addressing the many hundreds of RVs that you have in this city that are owned by residents that have them stored on their property. And at this time, it's looking somewhat onerous in the wording that you're planning on putting in the parking room, so I would ask you to look at that closely before you vote on that. I want to move on to one other thing, and that is now the signs. Having also sat through the work session and heard some of the proposed changes, as a handicapped person who often uses a mobility scooter, I already struggle with some of the sandwich boards that are on the street. There is no place for those sandwich boards on any street corner, and I don't think they should be allowed to be placed there for any reason. Traffic, the handicap access, there's many other reasons that I could come up with, but you already know what I'm talking about. So if you would please address that closely from an ADA standpoint. And both my wife and I use mobility scooters, and it is already an issue in some places. I also don't like seeing signs for some of the businesses that are well out, away from where the businesses are. I understood they were supposed to be in front of the businesses, and that's not being enforced, so I would ask that you look carefully at what you're thinking about with the signage. I worry about the flags that wave. Is that the same as a moving sign? You already have an ordinance against that, and yet we have flags right across the street over here waving all day long, saying we're open. So I think you need to look closer at your sign before you move ahead with your sign ordinance. Thank you very much for your time. I have nothing more.
Thank you, Steve. Okay, the next one I have is Mickey Garrus.
Hello. Honorable Mayor, Council President, members of the Dallas City Council, and the City Manager. I respectfully present my thoughts and recommendations concerning Agenda Item 7A for your consideration. I acknowledge that House Bill 3395 places significant constraints on the city's ability to apply standard land use regulations and processes under the state law and the Dallas Development Code. Recognizing that this presents a novel challenge for our city, I firmly believe that within the framework of House Bill 3395, there exists a singular, appropriate course of action. The Dallas City Council must assume the pivotal role of the ultimate decision-maker in this process. As elected representatives of our community, you are entrusted with this responsibility, and it should not be delegated to the City Manager, the staff, or any other committee or designee, or designee as stipulated by House Bill 3395. Delegating such a weighty decision to individuals who are not elected by the citizens of Dallas would be neither equitable nor ethical. It is foreseeable that unintended consequences may arise as a result. To maintain the integrity of this decision-making process, I insist that the public's voice be given due consideration, and that a comprehensive public hearing be an integral part of the process before the council reaches any determinations regarding applications submitted under the provisions of House Bill 3395. I respectfully propose that the council extends the duration of the public notice for this hearing to the maximum allowable days permitted by law. This extension would allow our community ample time to research the matter and prepare their public testimonies. This approach, I believe, aligns with the parameters of House Bill 3395, fosters good faith within the community towards the city council, promotes transparency, and enhances trust in the governing body. As elected officials and public servants, you bear the solemn duty to serve the collective interest of our people for the betterment of our community as a whole. In the weeks and months ahead, your character and resolve will be put to the test. I wholeheartedly encourage each of you to uphold what is right, even in the face of adversity, and even when the consequences appear imminent. I assure you that if you do so, the overwhelming majority of our community will stand in support of your principled decisions. Once the official process is established, the formal testimony can be considered concerning applications submitted under the framework of House Bill 3395. I intend to articulate the reasons why a homeless compound would be detrimental to the city of Dallas and would pose an unreasonable risk to the public health or safety. Additionally, I will express my concerns regarding the adherence of such a facility to applicable building and development codes. I sincerely appreciate your dedication and look forward to continuing this vital dialogue with you in the days ahead. Thank you for the consideration.
Thank you, Mickey.
Well, ladies and gentlemen, I'm a relative newcomer here to Dallas. We moved into Retirement Villages two years ago after...
Can we get your name and address, please?
Gordon Kelly, 295 Jasper, into Dallas Retirement Village. We've been here approximately, almost exactly, two years after 47 years in Salem. Part of the motivation, quite frankly, was to come to a smaller town without homeless situations. I hope it continues this way. We still, while we have moved, we still own property in Salem. Our tenants are harassed, have been, by homeless people. There's been property damaged on a regular basis by homeless people, and we've had to spend money to hire our own security people to make it safe for our tenants and customers. So I hope that I don't have to move again. Thank you.
Thank you.
So Mayor, if I can just interject here, for the people in the audience who are testifying, there are additional people outside, as many of you know, who would like to testify. In order for them to come in to testify, if after you're done testifying, if we could ask you to exit the room so that they makes room for the next people to come in, that'd be appreciated. Thank you.
So the next one is Sean Stacey.
Sean Stacey, 450 Northeast A Street, apartment number three, Dallas, Oregon. Mayor, City Manager, and Council members, thank you, City Council members, for allowing us the time to express our concerns regarding homelessness. I do understand that the council is in waters that are not easy to navigate and at times are bound by laws and/or emergency orders issued by the state and/or local governments. I pray that the City Council assumes the role of ultimate decision-maker as you are elected representatives of our community. I am also requesting a public hearing being deemed necessary so our voices can be heard and submitted as official record. I will start with the emotional side. My 14-year-old daughter, who just started her first day of high school at Dallas High, came to me recently and asked, "Will I be safe, Dad? Will I have to watch out for needles? Will there be drugs sold out in front of the school?" These are her valid fears, and they shall not be dismissed. I am her father, and I will protect her. Will you protect her? Will you guarantee her safe passage to her and others' children? If not, this poses an unreasonable risk to not only her safety, but others as well. Moving on. Will not pose any unreasonable risk to public health or safety as specified in House Bill 3395, Section 7, Line F. Have factors been considered in regards to the Americans with Disabilities Act, which states in part prohibits discrimination against people with disabilities in several areas, including employment, transportation, public accommodations, communication, and access to state and local programs? I would like to focus on the public accommodations part. Does this entail the city to assume liability for accommodations to be made to ensure safe passage of homeless with mobility issues that require the use of wheelchairs, walkers, and other assisting devices as they leave their low-barrier shelter? Sidewalks, lighted crosswalks, and streets, paved streets, once outside of the shelter's perimeter, that's quite an expense for the city to incur. So this becomes a city issue, which I'm sure will be brought to light at some point by some disabled individual experiencing homelessness and under the protection of the ADA of 2009. Wherever these funds come from, and with a city has already mentioned cutting emergency services, park services, library hours, and the possible closing of the aquatic center, I can only suspect that more cuts will be made to our valuable emergency services to accommodate individuals experiencing homelessness...
30 seconds.
...while a city of approximately 18,000 faces an unreasonable risk to life and property due to the lack of emergency personnel and response times. In closing, I am aware that this will not be submitted to record, and that is okay. My recorders stand beside me, behind me, and in front of me. I stand tall for my brothers and sisters. And any and all homeless encampments. In gratitude, a concerned father, husband, and Dallas resident. Thank you for your time.
It's a new system, everyone. We're getting used to it.
Everybody want to stand and hold hands with me?
Technology is wonderful when it works.
Okay, the next one is Mel Keller.
Hello, Mel Keller. I live at 111 Shelton-McMurphy Boulevard in Eugene, Oregon. My name is Mel Keller, and I'm the Education and Outreach Coordinator for the Fair Housing Council of Oregon. I am here to voice support for greater homelessness and transitional housing support in the city of Dallas. At the Fair Housing Council, our goal is to combat housing discrimination in Oregon through education and enforcement of fair housing law. We know that combating misinformation about shelters and transitional housing is part of the work of creating inclusive communities. This can further fair housing goals like diverse neighborhoods, increased housing choice, and accessible homes for all. I also want to stress that transitional housing and shelter projects are vital to addressing the housing crisis we are experiencing, and I believe the City Council should prioritize these issues. If there are any further questions about the intersections of fair housing and homelessness and transitional housing, please reach out to the Fair Housing Council of Oregon.
Next is Sherri Miller. Sherri Miller. We'll save that one. Chad Basaraba. Close enough?
My name's Chad Basaraba, 2070 Mistletoe Road, Dallas, Oregon. Mickey Garrus spoke more eloquently than I ever could about the two issues that I want to just put out first, is that any homeless shelter idea coming up in the future, I want public input on it. And then I'm requesting that you all are going to be the deciding factor on that, and you don't let somebody else outside of this entity that's responsible, the citizens of Dallas, be responsible for that decision. Now, I'll take up the rest of my time talking a little bit about House Bill 3395 and what I think of that. I just learned of this House bill, and it offends me that Portland politicians and bureaucrats whip up this idea to ramrod rural folks down our throats, a homeless shelter, and make it to where almost impossible to fight against it, when in their own backyards, it's failing miserably. Portland has a horrible homeless problem, and you go there and there's shelter upon shelter upon shelter. I'm retired Salem police officer, and I was there 25 years. Salem's got a bunch of shelters, and it's got a homeless problem like nobody's business. Eugene has a homeless problem. Seattle has one. All those places have a common denominator, and you would have to live in a cave not to know that it's the homeless shelter. When you build them, more people come in for the services. That's what happens. As a police officer in Salem, we would clear our conscience, if you would, or maybe limit our liability by taking people and dumping them off in different jurisdictions that had shelters or services. And that's what's going to happen here. I guarantee you that's what's going to happen. This place will be a dumping ground for West Salem to Grand Ron and all the way south, as far as the border, and then some. I don't buy any of the, they have to be from Polk County, and I watch these homeless people. They're got a network. All of them have a cellphone. They almost have a union, and they can get together and tell what the buzzwords are going to be, and they're going to be in those shelters like nobody's business. I am telling you as sure as I'm sitting here, they're going to find a way around all of that stuff. So I'm adamantly against the homeless shelter here. I'm adamantly against 3395, and I hope you guys see that for what it is as well. That's all I got. Thank you.
Thanks, Chad. The next one is Linda C. on Lewis Street.
If you can't tell, there's like a 20-second delay between what's said here and what's shown on YouTube.
Hello. My name is Corinne Trowbridge. I live on 1030 East Ellendale Avenue, Dallas, Oregon. My husband and I moved here about 35 years ago. We just moved back in the last 15 years, but I have known Dallas for a while. Mickey has asked me to speak tonight, and I'm afraid I'm not as eloquent as he is, but I do want to hit a couple of key points. One, I don't think anybody in this room is against helping homeless people that genuinely need help. That is not the issue here. The issue here is that you have a church or an organization that was thrown out of Independence, thrown out of Monmouth, and since that didn't work, they chose to go about it a different way and buy property so that they could bypass some of the processes. That alone should tell you that we're dealing with something that I wouldn't consider honest. Second of all, if this was just for Dallas citizens, then we ourselves should have figured that out, and we should have got our Dallas homeless people together and taken care of them, but that's not what this is about. And third, you are all, or most of you, voted in, and what I have found through this process is that a lot of your citizens don't understand that process as well. They don't understand who they voted as councilors, who they voted as commissioners, but they know now, and they're learning now. So make no mistake, this issue will bring all of Dallas together one way or another, and it will affect the voting of these seats. And I say that because with these seats comes the responsibility to walk through this process with you guys. You shouldn't pass it off. That's what you were voted in here to do, and that's what we expect, and that's what we want. So that's what I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. The next one is Judy Garrus. Next, I have Tyrone Jones.
Hello, City Council. My name is Tyrone Jones. I will not state my address because the first time I came here, my family was attacked after I talked, so we will not happen again. What I'm here to discuss is, last time I was here, I talked about being homeless myself and being, become successful after I was homeless and opening my own businesses. But what I left out, and I want to explain to you guys now, is I didn't do it on my own. I went in in 1995, and a very, a man named Andy Anderson, he was a very large white man, and I was homeless with two kids, and I had no idea how to make my next meal, how to take care of the kids, how to do anything. Andy gave me a job selling cars, and he was tough on me. He was really tough. I thought this white man hated me because I was black, and it's not true. What he actually did is he was holding me accountable, and he turned me into a hell of a car salesman and a good father, and he pushed me to be the best man I could be. If it wasn't for that chance that Andy gave me, then I wouldn't be where I am, and I wouldn't be able to pass on what I learned. And one of the things I learned is, in business, your car lot here in town, they worked for me at one time, and the stuff that Andy passed to me, I passed to them. Now, I know that homeless is going to be a problem in this town, but drugs are going to be a problem in this town. If we don't get ahead and try to figure out a way to work that out, then we will be behind the eight ball. These kids are going to be getting high at school with homeless people or not, and they will put themselves in that situation too, because we know that drugs is one of the causes for homelessness. So to act like this isn't going to come to our town is ludicrous to me. Now, I would tell you guys, at the very least, at least try to be, we don't need the government telling us what to do. We can be more like Andy Anderson and maybe spread out some of our skills in the community and teach some of these homeless people that do want to learn how to become successful and important in life, or to be successful in life, and be able to, you know, pay their bills and contribute. Because if we don't, it's going to sneak up on us one way or another. You know, my hopes is that we all can figure out how to work together to make our community a lot stronger.
30 seconds.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tyrone. Next one I have is Robert Spivey. Am I correct? Next one I have is Robert Spivey. Am I correct?
Hi, I'm Robert Spivey, 167 Southwest Newton Drive, Dallas, Oregon. I'm going to share a lot of the same sentiment as the crowd behind me and the folks outside, which is, we would definitely like the City Council to be the ones that make the decision on whether or not the application passes or doesn't pass according to law. Also ask for the longest timeframe for notification and allow public hearing. It's not easy. This is not an easy part or an easy time for the City Councilors of Dallas, for the leadership of Dallas. It's on. There's tension, and the tension is between the heart and the head. And our hearts say, you know, you help, and our head says, we got to do it right. And doing it right in this case is the elected officials making the decision. Prior to doing that, hearing the sentiment of the community. It's going to take hours. It's going to take long nights, but that's what we elected you to do. I met most of you about 18 years ago, when my wife and I moved to Dallas with our two little ones. After we moved here, we sat in the back. This room was empty. There was nobody in it but us in the back. Ken, you were there. In fact, they stopped the meeting halfway through and said, can we help you? Are you here for a reason? And we said, no, we're just here to find out how the city works and who's running things and kind of get a feel for the place. That was 18 years ago. And in the meantime, the City Council has been basing hard decisions. But at the end of the day, we love Dallas. My wife and I love Dallas. We had our third kid, and them here in Dallas, she's going to be a freshman. And we're excited that the City Council is here to do the hard work, and that's going to be listening to a lot of folks to make the right decision. Thank you all very much for your time, and I wish you the best of luck in the weeks coming ahead.
Thank you, Robert. The next one is Cliff Merritt.
Hi, my name is Cliff Merritt. Live at 398 Southwest Applegate Trail Drive, Dallas, Oregon. Mayor, City Council President, and members of the City Council and City Manager. I respectfully present my thoughts and recommendations concerning the agenda item 7A for your consideration. I acknowledge that House Bill 3395 places significant constraints on the city's ability to apply standard land use regulations and processes under state law and the Dallas Development Code. Recognizing that this presents a novel challenge for our city, I firmly believe that within the framework of HB 3395, there exists a singularly appropriate course of action. The Dallas City Council must assume the pivotal role of the ultimate decision maker in this process. As elected representatives of our community, you are entrusted with this responsibility, and it should not be delegated to the City Manager, staff, or any other committee or design stipulated by HB 3395. Delegating such a weighty decision to individuals who are not elected by the citizens of Dallas would be neither equitable nor ethical. It is foreseeable that unintended consequences may arise as a result. To maintain the integrity of this decision-making process, I insist that the public voice be given due consideration, and that a comprehensive public hearing be an integral part of the process before the Council reaches any determinations regarding applications submitted under the provision of HB 3395. I respectfully propose that the City Council extends the duration of public notice for this hearing to the maximum allowable days permitted by law. This extension would allow our community ample time to research the matter and prepare their public testimonies. This approach, I believe, aligns with the parameters of HB 3395, fosters good faith within the community towards the City Council, promotes transparency, and enhances trust in the governing body. As elected officials and public servants, you bear the solemn duty to serve the collective interests of our people for the betterment of our community as a whole. In the weeks and months ahead, your character and resolve will be put to the test, and I wholeheartedly encourage you, each one of you, to uphold what is right, even in the face of adversity, and even when consequences appear imminent. I assure you that if you do so, the overwhelming majority of our community will stand in support with the principled decision. Once the official process is established and formal testimony can be considered concerning applications submitted under the framework of HB 3395, I intend to articulate the reason why a homeless compound would be detrimental to the city of Dallas.
15 seconds.
And would be a proposed unreasonable risk to public health and safety. Additionally, I'll express my concerns regarding the adherence to such facilities to applicable billing and development codes. I appreciate your dedication and look forward to continuing this vital dialogue with you in days ahead. Thank you.
Next one is Mike Leopold.
Your Honor, City Council, I live in 540 Southeast Lockery Hall. My wife and I own the property on the corner, the Monmouth Cut Off, and home. And I'm down there all the, 20 years now we've been working on that place, and we've lived here for 30 years. And I've watched, I'm down there all the time. Across the street, they come and go all the time, all the RVs and vans and all this. Actually, about three, four weeks ago, they stripped one right down to the bones and hauled it off. I mean, they took it apart on the street. Didn't seem like nobody cared, you know? So I want you guys to have the say on this homeless shelter, because I've been out there a couple of times. Just inadequate water, sewer, do they have, like when you build a new place, like I did, you have to have handicapped bathrooms, you know? And, but the sewer systems and that. So say you put in a homeless shelter down there, you're going to tear the streets all up, you know, to put in new sewer lines, and then you got to deal with parking the RVs along the road there, and the fire department can't get in if there's a fire, which there might be. And anyway, it just goes on and on, you know, and there's no end to it. And these people don't, a lot of them don't want to be in the, they don't want that. They want their freedom. They don't like rules, you know? And so that's about it. I just would like to have you guys make the decision on whether that thing's going to be out there. I don't want any outside influences on this, because we have Shred down there, the workout center, and these people are down there at 5:00 in the morning, running up and down, you know, exercising and doing all this stuff, and for safety. You can't depend on it, you know? And then the police, you know, they're overloaded. It just goes on and on like that. So anyway, that's what, all I want to know is, if you guys are going to be responsible for that place out there.
30 seconds.
Because I don't think it's a very good spot. It's an old house anyway, so. Anyway, that's about all I got to say about it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Folks, just as a reminder, if we can avoid getting into the particulars of the proposed project, that is going to be something coming up later. The conversation tonight should be more generally about the process and about, as we said earlier, homelessness in the city in general. Please, we'll have an opportunity to discuss these other items later.
And also, I talked with city staff, and there's no one else that wants to come in, so there's no need for people to testify. If you don't want to leave, you don't have to. You're welcome to go out, and I hear there's a good YouTube watching party outside, where it's a little bit cooler. It's a little bit cooler, too. So that's up to you if you want to go or stay for the rest of the conversation.
Next one is John Falconer.
My name is John Falconer. I live at 1902 Southeast Holman Avenue, right next door to the proposed homeless shelter. And I cannot imagine what our lives will be if they put this in. Our bedroom is within feet of this property, and I believe a homeless shelter is necessary somewhere in Polk County, but not in the middle of a neighborhood. And we've been there for 23 years, and I can't imagine what it's going to do to the property value of our house, not to mention the crime. My granddaughter, Miley, goes to the high school just down the road. She's scared about this going in. My wife's scared to death, and it will destroy our neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. The next one is Joseph Heventhal.
Good evening, Joseph Heventhal. I live up on Jasper. I'm going to tell you a short story. Early in my marriage, me and my wife went down to Salem to enjoy a nice lunch. While we were walking down the street, a dog owned by a homeless man jumped towards my wife, had to physically pull her out of the way before she got bit. After this incident, we walked away fast and called the same police. The homeless man followed us, threatening physical harm to me because I was calling the police officers. The police officer responded 10 minutes later, shrugged off the issue, told me he knew the homeless man in question, that they had issues with him before, and that he would look into it. I already don't bring my young children to walk along the Dallas waterside paths due to all the garbage and needles that are found and the transients that are down there. I always pre-check the playground in town for needles since they are showing up, especially near a high school. I'm pleary to think about this homeless issue as it gets worse. Let the people of Dallas voice their concerns, and I bet you'll hear several stories like mine. You are elected officials, and you alone should decide. I'll leave you tonight with this statement. If you build it, they will come. Thank you.
Thank you. And next, Jackie Lawson.
Good evening, everyone. It's nice to see most of you that I recognize again. It's been a long time. I cannot comfortably give my address. I did fill it out on the form. I do not need physical feedback. We've been harmed plenty. Don't want to deal with it anymore, so it is on record. There's a few things I would like to address to the Council this evening, and one of them is specifically directed to Ken. Ken, at what point did the city get notification that you were going to have a lunch with the governor? And was this something that an agenda was shared with the Council? Did anyone else in the Council attend this lunch with Ken? I was extremely disappointed to hear when you reported to the Council that you shared to Governor Kotek that we are shovel-ready and open arms to take care of this fiasco that we're now addressing at this point. The rumor is out there. I have spoken to police officers locally, and they are very careful about not giving their own personal opinion, and of course, I don't want that. I don't want to put them in awkward position. So therefore, fact-finding, I have discovered from our local police officers that maybe a month ago, they knew that we had about 10 people in our community that are homeless. They know them by name. They took time to get to know them. They know where they're from, what their story is. And since the rumor of this proposal has come to our location, they are coming in droves. We are seeing four and five new people in the downtown. The trash that we as business owners have to pick up is disgusting. The fact that we have to step over people is not okay. It inhibits business. This has nothing to do with the homeless themselves. What is happening right now is homeless people are being used as pawns for a money grab, and I'm tired of it. We cannot continue in this community to keep giving these opportunities instead of solving the problem. What I, my suggestion is to counsel, is to say, no, thank you. We do not want this money after all. Go back, reopen the professional hospitals, get those people the help professionally that they need, insist as a council that we go back and recriminalize hard drugs. The solutions are there. We have resources for those people that really are in need. Of course, we care about them. We are compassionate about people, but there's people in this
30 seconds.
...location in Dallas, coming more and more. The reason Monmouth did not allow this to happen, they changed their mind, is because the people that camped in their front parking lot had a pit bull, and they were from Bend. These people are not local. We are not serving our community. I hope you think long and hard before you make decisions, and please take as much time as you need to make the extensions for the hearings so that you are well informed before you make these decisions. Thank you.
Thank you, Jackie. Next one is Charles Townsend.
Charles Townsend, 1532 Southeast Oselberry, Dallas, Oregon. I just moved here about maybe three and a half, four years ago. And when I moved here, this little town was absolutely perfect. I loved everything about it. And I came from a big city, and I like this slow pace. When we heard about the proposals and these things, it really hit home, because we'd seen it. We know exactly what's happened in the past where we used to live, and you guys have a big job. You guys can accept this and go along with the things that have happened in other cities and other towns, or you can come back with a totally open proposal and say, we don't want to do this. This is not in the best interest of our city. And basically, that's basically what I'm saying. I'm at a loss, because it does hit home. I have grandkids, which is the main reason that we moved here and we retired. And I don't want to see those grandkids hurt in any way because of some decisions that we're making along drug lines, along people that don't care, that people that, basically, this is the life they've chosen. They don't need to push it off on us. So that, please, we're strongly against what's going on. Thank you.
Thank you. And next is Cheryl Zence.
Cheryl Zence, 1331 Southeast Academy Street, Dallas. I hadn't intended on speaking this evening, but when I arrived, there were so many people outside. That concerned me, that the meeting is being held in such a small place, and that so many people are having to stand outside and watch this via YouTube. That's, being a person with disabilities myself, it doesn't feel like a very friendly thing to do to folks who have a hard time standing for a long time. So I would please ask that that be taken into consideration for future meetings, that, you know, I know at times that meetings have been held, you know, moved down to the civic center. So I would encourage that, so that more people can sit down and listen and not be physically, you know, creating a barrier with what we've done outside. So I hadn't intended to speak, so I wanted to mention that. Also, I just wanted to say that I, over the last 10 years or so, actually 15, I've gone to Portland a lot for medical appointments, downtown Portland, right in the heart of things, and seen the change in Portland, to where I went from feeling safe to not feeling safe, then seeing the same thing happen in Salem, then going through the same thing over the last year or so here in Dallas. It's gotten worse, and especially, I don't know, I don't think it's just because of this issue with homelessness and the shelter coming up, but, because I don't know, so I can't, I wouldn't state that. But I've noticed over the last month or so, a lot more homeless people. When I come downtown, the other day, I saw somebody digging stuff out of the trash. Over the weekend, there was a table dumped on a park near Love Love, and some guy was picking it up and carrying it down the street, and the person who took the picture of him carrying it down the street said they dismantled it behind a business. There's just a lot of stuff going on in our town that shouldn't be. Homelessness is a very complex issue, but I used to feel really safe walking on the Creek Trail. I'm feeling less so when my friend and I go walking in the park, and we go to the arboretum in the morning. I've stopped going early because there are people coming out of the arboretum with their stuff. And I don't know, and I'm, background-wise, I worked for Polk County Mental Health for 14 years. I used to be their mental health, fiscal, and housing development coordinator. I've been the person who was in the room with people angry over transitional and supported housing that I was housing that I was developing to help our community.
30 seconds.
Anyway, I just, I'm not sure how I feel about it because I've seen both, I've seen both sides of it, but I don't like what Measure 110 has done to our state and the liberal policies that have failed in Portland. And so I just would ask that people take a lot of time to think about this, that there's a lot of time for public input, and that we don't do things quickly unless forced to by Measure 3395. Anything we can do to delay would be, so that people can have input would be really important. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Sheri Lines. Kelly Fo.
My name is Kelly Fo. I live at 213 Southwest Westwood, and I've been talking to a lot of people for the last week. And those people have expressed their concerns, they've expressed their opinions. I've listened to them, and I told them that I was coming to speak in front of the council here. And I've been a Dallas resident pretty much all my life. So some of the things I reached out and tried to find was Union Gospel Mission. So I was in National Guard for 26 years. The guy that's running that is Dan Clam. I could not get a hold of him. But one of the other people that I know, there is a structured program, and I've listened to a lot of people out here, and I think that we're seeing is that we can have a program, but if there's no accountability, we don't get people off the drugs, then we're not helping these people. And then all we're doing is, if we put these small homes in here, we're just embracing tragedy, and that's what's going to take place. And I know a lot of people here in Dallas. I know a lot of people sitting up here on the council here, personally know you guys, and I know where your heart is, but we have to do the right thing. If it's to push back on House bill, they took my notes, because I wrote it down, 3955 or whatever it is, then we need to push back, but we need to do it the right way. We also look back, I didn't get a chance to talk to any of the churches here locally, but I reached out, and I've had my neighbors bring in homeless people. I went walk in the park early in the morning. I've seen homeless people in the park, and my dog went up there and he sniffed them, and I, you know, I have the utmost respect for every human life period. And when you look at it in the park, and I asked these guys, you know, what are you guys up to? And he goes, you're sleeping, you're not supposed to be here. And he goes, well, you know what? We can plug into power. We can charge our phones. I'm not holding that against them. But you know what? We need to make sure that people are accountable. And I think the other thing going forward, I got 47 seconds, is that this council meeting with the minimum amount of people that are sitting in here, for the rest of the people that are sitting down here, not listening to what everybody here is trying to talk to you folks and tell you that we're not trying to stop anything, we're just trying to tell you to do it right. So when you vote, do the right thing, and that we do care about people. And I say that from my heart. And I just, you know, I've got 19 seconds, and I just hope you guys look deep inside what you're going for and not be about money. The gospel, I looked, the folks, they've got 20 people, the church in a park, people have 20 people, and I don't know enough whether they're educated, they are educated people, but is it about money? I don't know. So I'm sorry.
Thank you. Glenn Thorson.
Good evening, council members. Didn't expect to talk tonight, but thought I'd give a little different perspective. We've lived in Dallas for
Excuse me, name and address, please.
Glenn Thorson. My address is 591 Southwest Church Street. I live in the community right behind the academy building. We've been dealing with the homeless for the last three years. I've got video cameras. They defecate on my front porch. They do it in my driveway. I'm on a first-name basis with a good portion of the Dallas PD. I've got nothing but quality work to say for the Dallas PD and how they're stretched. And it very much concerns me. We bought that house 20-some years ago, 25 years ago, and we wanted to raise our family here. We love this town. My teen daughters don't go down to the park anymore because it's not safe. My teen daughters carry mace everywhere because they're concerned. They asked me for it. I've got, my youngest is a senior at the high school, and the potential to put a major traffic line for homeless people between downtown and put the high school in the middle of it. I understand we're not supposed to reference the project, but when I've got video, and I'm already on a first-name basis with the local police department about what is currently happening, and now we're going to add to the load, because I do believe, build it and they will come. And I ask all you folks, if you want families to live in this community, do everything you can to do the right thing for the people that need help in the right way, but when it impacts those of us who are raising our families in the midst of it, please go to bat for us. Go to bat for us so that we're protected, so that my daughter, when her boyfriend is dropping her off at midnight, there's a homeless guy across the street swinging a nine-foot stick going, I'm going to effing kill you both. And she's calling me up from upstairs. Do the right thing for our kids. I don't like having those conversations with my children. Thank you.
Thank you.
Gary Wise, 1401 West Orendale, Dallas. I didn't bring any notice because I didn't expect to testify, but it seems to me that the problem here is not just what's going on locally. The problem is what's happening in the United States. We have a homeless problem all over the United States. So I ask, why are people homeless? And a lot of that is because of drug addiction. It's because of mental illness. Some is become because of healthcare. People get sick, they can't go to work, they get fired, they can't pay their rent, and they end up in a car or on the street. You're not going to solve this problem unless you deal with the individual issues that cause homelessness, the majority of homelessness. And so I urge you, so every one of you, to think about what causes it and write an action plan for dealing with each part of it. The mental illness people are not going to be helped by drug addiction programs, but if you don't have drug addiction programs, you're not going to help them either. Whether or not you place people in living situations here in the city, it's not going to help them unless you identify the causes for each individual group of people and deal with it on that basis. Now, Mr. Mayor, you've been a businessman for 50 years in this community, I think, and as a businessman, you see problems, you identify clearly what those problems are, you write a plan of action to deal with them. You're a problem solver, and you're not going to solve the problem that's in this community without addressing each one of those, I think, four items on homelessness. So that's all I want to say. Please think about the causes and how this community can get together and have a discussion about it. This is your opportunity to get people together and talk about the real solutions. And it isn't just getting them off the street, you have to solve their personal problems. And I think that's really what I wanted to say tonight. And thank you for listening to me. I do have my phone number and email on the sheet. If you want to call me, I'm happy to do that. Just make sure you tell me that you're not selling anything. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members.
Thank you.
Good night.
Next one is Melinda Waller. Walker. Walker.
Hi, I'm Melinda Walker. I don't feel comfortable giving my address, but I'm a local resident and business owner, and I live here with my husband and my young son. And a lot that I wanted to say has already been said, so I don't want to reshare all of those things, but I did want to share two personal stories. One, my father is a recovered or in recovery, never fully recovered, drug addict. He was a meth addict, he was a heroin addict, name it, he did it. He was homeless for years in the Portland area. He lived under bridges, truly, and he was in prison on and off for years. He celebrated this August 25 years clean and sober and is now a pastor. And he, I've been speaking to him about this because having that in my heart of knowing these people need help, we want to help, but how do we do that? What is the right way? And he has been doing prison ministry and homeless ministry for years, and it's just very apparent that there's a way to go about it and a way, a way that tends to work and a way that doesn't work. And the truth is, when we go about trying to help individuals by putting them in one place without the proper resources, without the ability to learn life skills, coping skills, you know, resources for addiction, all of those things, it's not going to work. It's just going to become a hub. And on a personal note, this very last week, an individual that my father has been trying to help for years, who has been staying on one of these camps, was murdered right at the camp. Because it is a hub for crime, for drugs, and for all the things that we, in small-town community here and just in general, do not want to have in our communities where we are raising our families. And so I just, none of us are saying that we don't need to find a solution, but we need to figure out other solutions. In addition, a couple other just things for thoughts. I know multiple individuals who work at the local jail, and we don't have resources to even serve those individuals properly. So how are we going to serve a whole group of additional individuals who are going to come here trying to get services when we don't even have services for the people who are here? And then this might be an additional controversial conversation, and I don't want to get into the semantics of it, but we are creating a situation that is going to bring more drugs to our community. And I find that
30 seconds.
What's that?
Just time.
And I find that interesting when we have voted to not even have to come into our community. So lots to think on. We have to find a way to service these people, but a general hub of congregation is not the way to do it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Darla Teal.
Well, as just said, I'm Darla Teal, and I've been a resident of Dallas since 1975. Parents moved me and four other siblings up from Los Angeles, California. If you're to watch videos in Los Angeles, California at the moment, you will notice that the homeless at Skid Row started like with a little Dallas and has branched out to what is not a very good situation. So I'd like to ask that you city councils honestly take both sides, because I know for a fact that there's pros and cons on everything in the world, everything. So look and do your homework. Go to the Church at the Park facilities, talk to the employees, and get honest answers. Really talk to the people who have been housed there. The last thing I read was there's about 50% success rate of getting them from their community, if you will, to their next level up. Well, is there any homework done on what that next level becomes? How successful are they at that next level? Where are they going, really? So I'm just really asking that you guys really do your homework. Talk to the local community here in Dallas. I've heard a lot of stories already here, and thankfully, they've already talked about what I was going to, so they helped me out on that one. Ask the local community, their businesses, their personal experiences, like you've heard tonight. Terrible personal experiences, not good. And what's going to happen if that continues? The businesses that are hard to keep in downtown Dallas are going to start disappearing if this is allowed in. And Church at the Park, because it's a low-level facility, there's no drug mandates, they don't have to have any sobriety. Sobriety is their choice if they want it. So they're just welcomed in once they qualify, but once they're there, if they want to use the resources, then they can. Just like Ms. Walkovich just talked.
30 seconds.
I've got history in our family too, drug and alcoholics, and I talked to my sister, who thank God, she's 19 years in sobriety, and I told her about this, and she's like, excuse the phrase, hell no, you don't offer that kind of stuff. You've got to make them do the footwork forward. So do your homework, seriously. Talk to the people that Church at the Park is inviting and helping and people working for them, and talk to our local community people on how much it's affected them. We're already at a low budget. We can't afford future tax possible problems. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, the following people didn't, had turned in a card but did not speak, just make sure I didn't miss them. Sheri Miller. Then the C Lewis, I can't remember. Don Olson. Judy Garris. Sheri Lines. I also have a written testimony from David and Kathy Webb.
Have we checked to see if those people are downstairs?
I was going to say, I don't think she was.
Yeah, so I've been communicating with staff members to make sure that no one outside wanted to speak yet, so, and no one's come back up. So I don't think anyone's still outside that wants to speak, but we're doing the check. Is it all mayor?
Is there anybody, any on the telephone? Okay. So that's all that I have. So it moves us into the next consent agenda.
Mayor, if we can just wait a minute, just make sure no one else, all right, no one else wants to speak outside.
Consent agenda, and that consists of approve the August 21st, 2023 work session minutes, approve the August 21st, 2023 city council meeting minutes. Move to approve. For a second.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, very unanimously. Next item is reports or comments from the mayor and council members. Nancy?
Thank you. At a recent council meeting, we heard testimony from residents living on Northwest Denton Avenue, and they are concerned with the increased traffic and the safety of children who live in the neighborhood. I personally visited the area and observed the traffic there, spending a couple hours just seeing what the neighborhood's like. I understand their concerns. I feel that the city council can and should address the testimony by considering a four-way stop at the intersection of Northwest Denton Avenue and Jasper Street at the next council meeting, and I request that this item be placed on the September 18th agenda.
Comments?
I have one. I was thinking about the, how the addition of those speed monitor things on Levens. I would like to have city staff do some type of study on changes in speed sensors were installed, and maybe something like that would be applicable on Denton.
Yeah, so
Hotspot areas.
Yes, all of the areas where those new speed signs are up that tell people how fast they're going, we've done speed studies in each of those areas. So doing another speed study now that those are up, we can compare and contrast from the previous study to what's there now, to see kind of the efficacy of those signs. We can certainly do that. I think with Ms. Adams requesting that item to be on the September 18th agenda, we'll go ahead and bring that back and a discussion on whether, you know, a speed sign like that is appropriate at that intersection could be had at that time.
Okay, sounds good.
Do I recall the last time we discussed this, you said that those units are relatively inexpensive?
Um, yeah, I don't know the exact cost of them, but in our budget, each year, we have money set aside for, for street improvements. I mean, Gary probably knows the price off the top of his head. Do you know how much those cost, Gary? Do you know how much those cost, Gary?
Six thousand.
Six thousand dollars a piece.
That's more than I remembered. Okay, that's substantial.
David stole half my question. Do they also come with automatic, like a red light camera? So as soon as you're caught speeding, it takes your picture, just like the red light camera? Do they come like that?
So you can get photo radar devices for enforcement, and the state law has changed recently to allow photo radar in the community. There's things that we need to do if the council's interested in doing photo radar. But the ones that we have currently don't have photo radar in them.
Nancy, would that be something that we could also talk about during the next meeting?
Yeah. Like you said, I just think it's important that we come to that point, and I think stop signs in that sense, too.
Yeah, so we can certainly talk about the stop signs. And then if you want us to address photo radar at the next meeting, we can talk about what the state law allows and doesn't allow. Do you want us to do that?
And what they cost, because that's a fact.
Yeah, we can do that as well. Yep. I guess a question for you. Do you want the photo radars to be a council discussion, or do you want the photo radars to go to public works?
What is the right way to handle this?
I would say that the stop sign, you've had testimony from the public on that topic. It's something that you've had staff reports on, so it feels like the Denton and Jasper intersection is a four-way stop, is a discussion that maybe the council is already engaged in it the full body, where photo radar is going to be a topic that's going to require some, you know, investigative work, some studies, asking questions, probably more appropriate for a committee. So I would recommend the photo radar to go to the public works committee.
The only issue I see with that is, I think it's a joined proposal, in that if you're putting photo radar in, I don't know if the stop signs needs to be there, if we're spending that, because, or vice versa. I mean, so I don't know if you should have just the discussion on one, I think it's a combined issue. I mean, I could see it go to a committee first.
I would think personally that the stop signs are very inexpensive compared to everything else. So let's try them first, see what happens.
I don't think you need the radar, unless people are blowing through the stop signs, then.
Well, our study showed that the top speed was 28.
That was, that was the average speed, it was 27 miles per hour.
That's not really too excessive for collector's speed. It is over the lemon, but I would think put in a four-way stop sign. Firstly, I think that would be the first step, and then we can see what happens. Yes?
I would support the public safety to take a look at the radar globally around the city, and it's just not on Denton Street, that's an issue. It's becoming more and more of an issue on most of our.
Like you said, billboards.
It can be public works or public safety, it's the same, same group of folks.
The reason I like that concept is because they're speaking, we've heard a lot about accountability for the last hour and 15 minutes, but there's not only accountability, there's also a detriment of, they get to pay us. If you want to speed, you also get to pay us, and it's a relatively low impact for our amazing staff, because they don't, we don't actually have to send out anybody to do it. Not that I've ever actually had one of those, ever, but it just takes your picture and sends, sends it to you.
Did you smile?
It wasn't me. It was never me.
David.
Yeah, on both halves of this, I agree totally with Brian, that we've, we've had about as much discussion on the stop sign as, as there is to be had, so it's just a matter of making a decision on that one. And yeah, I also think that we should send the more complicated issues to committee, because it may be homework, research, cost estimates, all kinds of background information that we're going to want to have to crunch that formula, and that's the right place to do that homework.
Are we okay with this?
Yeah.
Anything else from the mayor or council members?
I'm sorry, if I get, was the, was the request to have the stop sign discussion?
So the stop sign discussion will be at the next council meeting.
You've been delegated the authority for stop signs.
Right. But it sounds like what councillor Adams would like is to have the council have a discussion on that.
Okay, before, okay, all right.
Right.
Is that okay?
Just to be clear, yeah, well, it's fine, yeah. You, you've delegated that, but you still have
Right.
Control over that as well.
Okay, thank you.
Just to be clear what your options are.
Yeah, and then photo radar is coming back down to the committee.
I have one more quick thing, too. Considering the amount of crowd today and the possible feelings that people feel locked out of their government, even though we're letting them in and in shifts, kind of, in the foreseeable future, until things about this whole topic are resolved, can we have the meeting in Civic Center? Because I agree, it is difficult up and down the stairs, up and down the elevator, standing around outside.
Yeah, the biggest challenge with having a meeting today is one, we didn't know
I understand.
The crowd that we were anticipating until today. That being said, I think that yes, the other, the other challenge of transitioning that immediately is that we're required by state law to film all of our meetings and have them be livestreamed. We're not set up for that down in the Civic Center without advance notice, so it takes us time to get everything set up, and we weren't prepared for that today. So, but we can be for meetings as long as you'd like us to, and what we will just as a practice, be prepared for that.
Okay.
Moving right along, reports from the city manager and staff.
It's you.
I know, I'm myself in that.
You're both city manager and staff.
That's true. All right, so the first item is the House Bill 3395 process, of which you just heard a lot of people comment on tonight. So this item is on page
Seven.
Seven of your agenda. So I'm not going to go into great detail on this, hopefully you've read it. I know Council President Schilling made, made sure, gave some additional correspondence to hopefully direct your attention to this topic. So Church of the Park met with me on Monday of last week and asked me some technical questions related to the land use process, which is the process I directed them to go towards, knowing that House Bill 3395 was an option. They knew that was an option from the get-go. After our pre-application conference meeting, you know, they decided to move away from the land use decision process to have an exploration into House Bill 3395. And so because House Bill 3395 does not specify in enough detail some procedural steps that need to be taken in terms of what the process looks like, I asked Church of the Park pretty pointedly, are you intending to submit an application under House Bill 3395? He indicated at, at that time that yes, as of today, I can tell you that's what we want to do. So with that confirmation, I told him that I need to go to the city council with the procedural aspects of House Bill 3395. There are three of those, and for just the benefit of the council, I think we'll take those topics one at a time and maybe make a decision on each one. So the first one is on page eight, and it is that House Bill language does not specify who or what body at the local government is responsible for making decisions whether or not an emergency shelter satisfies the criteria that are outlined in House Bill 3395. And so as outlined in the staff report, you have a few different options of who can make a, who can make that decision. And the options that are listed here, the four I listed, are not limited to those four. You can choose some other alternative if you'd like. But the four options I listed are, one, the city manager or designated, two is the planning commission, three is the city council, or four is perhaps a three-person committee composed of the city managers, a city councilor, and a planning commissioner. You received a lot of testimony tonight indicating the community's interest, sounds like they would like the council to make the decision, but ultimately, it is your decision to decide who would decide an application under House Bill 3395. So I'll go ahead and stop talking there and allow the council to discuss that and decide what you'd like to do.
David?
Yeah, I reached this conclusion before we heard a single word of testimony. I absolutely think that it should be us that decides, for all kinds of good reasons that I think we can all think of, so I won't get down in the weeds with each little bit of it, but yeah, this isn't a decision for, for someone who hasn't been elected by the voters. It's too much of a third rail. It goes too deeply into all kinds of community concerns, any of which we heard tonight, some of which we can think of for ourselves. So yeah, I absolutely think that it should be a council decision. And to save time, I'll also, I'll just comment very briefly on the next thing you haven't discussed yet, which is whether or not to have a public hearing.
Let's do these one at a time.
Yeah, let's do one at a time, David, just make sure that.
Okay, well, I was going to try to save some time, so let's stop there.
Does anybody else want to comment on who makes the decision?
I do.
David?
I agree that it should be the city council. I think it would be embarrassing shirking of duties by us putting that off on anyone else, especially a single person or a small committee. We have a very wide range of abilities here, and I think we can make a responsible decision.
Okay, agreed. So we have a consensus that it'll be the city council?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, so the next item is just the paragraph below those four options, and that is that House Bill 3395 provides that an emergency shelter can be made, a decision on that can be made with or without a public hearing. Given the amount of testimony you received tonight, there's interest in the community, we've known this for a while, on this topic, looking at it as a land use process, and staff would recommend a public hearing be conducted. The public hearing is not a land use hearing, I want to make that clear. If you choose to have a public hearing, we would treat it similar to we do, similar to like a community development block grant public hearing that you have, right? Or a budget public hearing, where you invite the public in, you take their testimony, that could include the applicant's testimony, and then you close the hearing after the testimony's done and you make a decision. And so that's the, the public hearing that we're talking about it. It does not include things such as ex parte contact, conflicts of interest, those, those things that are typical in a land use hearing do not apply to this type of a public hearing.
Conflict of interest would.
Well, sorry, yeah.
Yeah.
Ex parte contact, yeah, conflicts of interest applies, but ex parte contact would not apply. So those conversations that you're limited to having under a land use decision are not limited under a House Bill 3395 decision. I would recommend, and Lane can chime in the A and N on this, but I would recommend until an application is submitted, that you kind of abide by the land use process, because we don't know ultimately what Church of the Park is going to do until they submit an application. So until we have an application under House Bill 3395,
That's a prudent.
I would continue to not engage in the community conversations.
Well, fundamentally, we can't act on anything that hasn't been submitted,
Right.
No matter what it is.
Correct.
But in particular, I would still continue to avoid ex parte contacts until we have an application and we know for sure what path they're going to be taking.
And Lane, one other clarification, just to make sure, and even if we do go under HB 3395 and it, no ex parte contact, it could be appealed or not, or denied, and therefore would it not, and they could reapply under a land use?
Well, yeah, actually.
So then.
Yeah, 339, yeah, I would, I would think that highly unlikely, because 3395 is the easier way to get an approval, so I wouldn't be too worried about that. If they, if they elect to go under 3395, I think we'll just treat it as, as under 3395 and not being a land use proceeding, which means you're fair game.
Rephrase that.
That you may be contacted by your constituents.
Even if they appeal, a denial?
If they appeal the denial, if they, if anybody appeals, if you approve and somebody appeals the approval, if you deny and somebody appeal, and the applicant appeals the denial, and the appeal goes to circuit court, not to, not through the land use planning process. And yeah, so there, that's, even that is a unique process of review for a kind of decision like this.
But then if they decided to go ahead and go through the land use, then have we?
Yeah, I think at that point, number one, I think that's so
Well, you just.
Unlikely, I would discount it.
Yeah, if the easier way doesn't work, they're not likely to try the harder way.
Yeah.
But i- if they did, just to answer that, David, before you jump in, sorry, if they did try the process after you had the first process, then you would simply just make declarations like you would in any land use process.
Yeah, remember, because remember, ex parte contacts are not illegal, they just have to be disclosed on the record, so it's cumbersome, we want to avoid them, but they're not illegal.
Yeah, since we are talking hypothetically at this moment, because nothing's been submitted yet, but I'll just go on record that if they do go the HB route, then yeah, we should have a public hearing, yeah, because otherwise, it's going to be torches, pitchforks, tarred feathers, and it's just the right thing to do, anyway.
I would s-
Go ahead, Lane.
I would suggest holding that open over a multiple amount of councils, and limit the time to an hour a night, rather than be here until nine o'clock in the morning.
Rather than do a marathon.
And just keep the public record open.
Yeah, so as far as the, because it's not a land use process, you're not subject to any timelines, right, that are prescribed under the land use process. So, you know, you could, you could say, we're going to hold a public hearing, so in the event that you get an application, you're going to hold a public hearing, you can provide the notice, and then during the public hearing, if we have, you know, 300 people in the room, 300 people, you know, generally would take about eight hours of testimony to get through, you can say, hey, we're not going to sit here for eight hours, we're going to limit tonight's testimony to two hours or an hour and a half, or whatever you come up with. And then you could take that testimony and then postpone the hearing to the next meeting of the council, where you could take additional testimony and then so on and so forth until all the testimony is received.
Larry stole half my idea or question. So is it possible for us not only to say, we'll be holding a hearing, it'll be limited to this amount of time, people who kind of first come, first served, first come, first speak, but can we also ask people to like register in advance so that we have some sort of an idea? Is that, is that kosher in this situation?
You could, yeah, you could do that.
I think that could be, could be helpful. Could we also ask that testimony is limited one per person so that people don't come back multiple times? I think all of the, I am not in any way, shape, or form trying to limit, that's a big fat lie, I'm totally trying to limit, because I don't want to sit here for eight hours, but I'm not trying to limit any one person speaking, but I, I just want to make sure that we don't have people who are like, great, I'm going to be the first person to put my sign out on every single corner, and I'm going to be the first person to sign up every single day, and then we're hearing the same group of people all three meetings.
Well, and if, especially if it's the same thing,
Message.
That they're saying the same thing, but really, I have looked at things and had a staff meeting, for example, and, you know, said a few things about it, go home, next week, something comes up, and I'm like, you know what, I thought about this, too, here's another, you know, so I, I don't know about limiting it to the person.
That's a good point.
You can always, you can always provide written testimony, so if someone provides oral testimony, and then they have the epiphany of other things they wanted to say, even, even in oral testimony, if you limit it to three minutes like we did tonight, which is pretty customary, if someone, you know, has a hundred-page, you know, document that they want to share with the council, they can do that, and they're not going to read 100 pages in three minutes. They can hit some highlights, give the executive summary, and say, and I've submitted this 100-page document for you to review, and that would become part of the public record.
We could just have the 800 people call Kirsten.
Yeah, that happens now. Thanks.
Yeah, I'm in agreement that there, there has to be public testimony. It would, again, embarrassing to even think that we would just, well, too bad, we don't want to hear from you, I, I can't imagine that.
Yes, can we also make accommodations to have the meeting a little bit earlier in the day, which will allow more time to listen to more people?
Part and part of the people can't get off work.
True.
Not like you and I.
But again, there's written testimony.
We could also, I mean, if we're talking about work, maybe we could have it on a weekend, when people are off of work.
They don't want to give up their weekend any more than we do, so.
Yeah, no.
I just want to listen to a lot of people.
So I would like to extend it a while. I mean, if we're thinking, because if, if there's a notice in the paper, it's what, 10 or 20 days for a notice?
We can talk about the notice after, that's the third item we'll talk about, but.
Oh, it was a separate item, sorry. But yeah, I think we're probably in agreement all about having a public hearing.
Yeah, it sounds, it sounds like, is anyone opposed to having a public hearing?
No, we're flexible on the length of the
All right. So, yeah, so we'll have a public hearing, the details of what that public hearing looks like, we can tease out over time. Some of those decisions you can make during the first public hearing, right? If you, I don't want to assume that we're going to have 500 people show up or two people show up, but when you see what's there in front of you, you can start making decisions on, hey, I think we have too many people to get through everyone tonight, we can do a registration ahead of time and get people to sign up in advance and notify them, hey, we're only taking, you know, 30 people today, so the first 30 people are going to show up. Maybe we say the first, you know, 40 people show up, and if the first 30 people, you know, were all there, then the last 10 don't get that opportunity that night, but they're the first 10 next time. There's different things that we can do to structure that to, you know.
Well, and as has been said, since, if it's not going to be a land use process, we have a lot more freedom to arrange it the way that makes the most sense to arrange it.
Right, yeah, I think the, the key point to make in having a structured amount of testimony time is, this is one item that the city council is dealing with, and it's an important issue, but But there are, you know, usually five to 10 things that a council considers at each meeting. And if we're taking, you know, two or three meetings where this is the only thing we discuss in order to get all the testimony in, we're halting all the other city business that needs to take place.
Is it okay, is it like legal for us to us, I don't mean us, I mean us, to provide a bit of like education on what House Bill 3395 does? Like a summary, here's what we can and can't do. And while it's really important that we do take into account the thoughts and opinions of the people who live and work here in Dallas, there, it is a House bill, and I geeked out and read it, all of the amendments and all of the public, like I went down that rabbit hole, and I don't think we need to go quite into that depth. But we could probably provide before public testimony a bit of education, not to nullify people's opinion, but to help put it in context.
No, if I may, that's a good point. Actually, your memo is a good start tonight. Staff report is a good start at that. Section seven is the applicable section of 3595, 3395. It's a big bill, but section seven is the only one that we're dealing with for the purposes of this emergency shelter process. And there is one aspect of the bill that is like a land use proceeding in that the bill sets out for you the criteria on which your decision must be based, and only on these criteria. They begin at the bottom of the first page of the memo, and they continue on to the second page. For instance, impact on property values is not a criteria that you may consider in determining an application for housing under House Bill 3395. Cost of providing public services to the, to a shelter is not a criteria that you can apply. That you are limited to those bullet points, because they are the ones that are identified in the bill, and you are strictly limited to that. So this is really a good primer for what the discussion, and I think it'd be fair at the beginning of the public hearings to inform the public of that as well. Because in that respect, it is like a land use hearing. It's not just whether we like this or don't like it. It's whether certain criteria have been met by the application or can be met with conditions of approval if the council wants to. That would be the basis in your decision.
Well, there are a lot of cases in which the public thinks we have more freedom to act than we do. And this is a classic example of it.
You are very constrained by this, by this bill, not entirely. You, it is not, you don't have unlimited discretion.
Could we put, this is same topic, but slightly off kilter. Brian and I had discussed like how to respond to people, because I was getting emails, and they were angry that I wasn't giving them my opinion or agreeing or disagreeing with them. And so we crafted kind of a stock email to send back saying, you know, this is why we can't discuss it. Can we put something like that on the city webpage that they can then share? That, you know, your city councillors are not trying to ignore you. It's not that we don't care about the issue, it's that there are legal ramifications, whether it's land use issue, and until this other application, they haven't even turned that in yet, it's been a week. So something so the public knows that overall, I've had my picture taken, I've had someone yell at me at the park in front of my daughter.
I thought there was something on the website.
I mean, it's just a lot.
Yeah, I don't know if we have a webpage dedicated to this topic yet, but it is something that we can include.
Even on the Facebook page, so that we can share it on the community pages. We're not just being jerks, this is the way it is.
Yeah, we can put some communication together. We might even have a, we might develop a web, I would anticipate developing a webpage on our website that, you know, talks about emergency sheltering, House Bill 3395, and maybe a sentence there to say, you know, no application's been submitted until it has been, and then we can change that to, an application was submitted. Which is another way to communicate when that action takes place. We have been very proactive, and anyone that is, has any interest in this topic, we have them email Kim, and she has a running list. I don't know how long the list is, I anticipate it's pretty long, of people that will be notified when an application is submitted. So I think we as a staff have been pretty proactive at gathering the, the interest, being able to communicate that out. And anyone that has communicated with me, I've been very forthcoming with all the information. You know, here's where we are, here's what this is. But I think we can't be more proactive in getting information out about why the city council, you know, why the city council members can't talk about things yet. And once House Bill 3395, if that application is turned in, then communications between the councillors can happen. But to respect the privacy of the councillors if they choose not to engage in those conversations.
The picture taking, honestly, in a public place was weird. But yelling at me in a public park in front of my child, not okay. Not going to happen again.
Yep. So it sounds like, it sounds like you want to have a public hearing, so that's good. The last issue is noticing. So it's not a land use decision, so you don't have requirements to provide public notice outside of the 24 hour notice that's required before a city council meeting is held. Staff would recommend kind of following and actually going a little bit above and beyond what's required in our land use code for a public hearing. And that is to have a 10 day newspaper notice, which is a requirement, and then a 20 day mailed notice to neighboring properties. I'm proposing a 300 foot buffer from the proposed property site. What's required under the code is a 100 foot buffer, so 300 feet is what I'm proposing. If you feel that needs to be larger, you can do that. Just know from a cost standpoint, the larger you go, the more people we have to mail out notices to. I don't anticipate there's probably too many people within 300 feet that don't already know that this is a possibility, but it's still something that you can do. There are, if you want to go above and beyond what's, what's recommended here, you could say, hey, we want to have a newspaper notice that goes in two successive weeks of the newspaper, so we can do that. You know, so you have it in the aisle one week, and then it's in the aisle the next week. You can do other noticing. We send out notices in our utility billing software every once in a while, and so we have two rounds of utility billing that go out, one at the beginning of the month, one at the end of the month. And so you could require a notice that goes out through that system. It's really kind of up to you on what you want to do, those are just some options.
How many feet away is the high school? We heard a lot of testimony today about high school.
I would have to ballpark that, I would say it's at least 1,000 feet.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah.
Do you want to stick with these two notice dates? Or have you?
I'm recommending a notice of a 10 day newspaper notice and a 20 day mail notice within 300 feet of the proposed site. That's what's recommended by me. If you want to do something different, let me know, let us know.
I like the two successive notifications.
In the newspaper, two, two weeks? Okay. The two successive weeks in the newspaper.
I'd also like to add, it's certainly expensive to add it to the utility bill.
That was going to be my question, is what's the cost impacted?
Yeah, so slightly, how much does it cost to put a notice in each cycle of utility billing?
Page water conservation that we did for one cycle of the billing was about 335.
Yeah, so you're spending around $700 to put.
How much information would you put in?
It's a one, eight and a half by 11 sheet of piece of paper.
Yeah, you could do front, back.
Okay, oh.
Here's the reason, here's the reason why I wanted, well, I was going to ask that same question. You put it in the newspaper, you put it on the website, some people will see it, many people won't. I was just thinking, you might get more thorough coverage putting it in the bill if it's not hideously costly to do it, that's where I was coming from.
I, I think that, you know, you're going to spend a couple hundred dollars doing a mailing notice, and the bigger you make the mailing notice, that cost is going to go up and up. So I think the mailing notice at 300 feet is adequate. And if you want to add so that you get the whole community notified, I would do it through the utility billing program, which means that your notice period is going to be extended from, you know, a 20 day notice to probably more like a 30 to 45 day notice.
That's what I'm in favor of. It would reach more of the community. I, I'm sorry, and it sounds like a lot of money, you know, even if it was 500 bucks. That sounds like a lot, except that information is worth far more than that. And as a community member, I'd be livid if my city was saving a couple hundred bucks and I was uninformed about something that important.
Yeah, I, I, the cost, I don't think the, the utility billing cost is, is a, is, it's, yeah, it's not a major factor in my.
Yeah, I think that's fantastic, and that would push it, what, 45 days total?
I would probably do a 40, I would probably do a 45 day notice period. That, and that, that enables you to get the notice into both cycles and some time then to attend the meeting after the second cycle goes out.
Yeah, I think extending it longer is fair for the entire community. I mean, there are people, like renters, sometimes don't get those bills, right? But there are other, at least, other ways to get that information if they don't get the utility bill.
Yeah, I mean, the newspaper, the notice in the, if you live nearby, will probably have this on the, on the webpage, will be another place that they can go to find it. If they're on the city council distribution list, that'll be another way that they'll find out. They'll have less time, because we don't distribute the agendas until, you know, four or five days before the meeting. Talking to their neighbors, I mean, there's lots of different ways where this information will be disseminated. So just in summary, it sounds like you're in favor of a 10 day newspaper notice, two successive weeks in the newspaper, a 20 day mail notice to properties within 300 feet of the proposed site, and a utility billing notice covering both cycles. All right, that's what we'll do. That's all for that item here, but.
Thanks.
Oh, wait, I have one more thing. Are we for our next meeting going to be able to meet in the civic center? Is the two weeks or whatever in our next meeting going to be long enough? I'm anticipating, based on what I see and what I hear around and the turnout tonight, it doesn't matter if that's on the agenda, they're going to want to talk about it.
Sure, so.
Tonight was fine myself.
Yeah, we can work, we can work on making sure that the civic center is equipped to be able to do video recording with the council, so we'll work on that over the next two weeks.
So I do like it in here, and I understand the video thing, but I do think it's, it sounds cheesy, but it's kind of un-American to have people standing outside when we could have just met somewhere else, not that we had noticed, but now that we do see that there's going to be a bigger interest, then it seems like it'd be wiser to have it in a larger space.
Yeah, given the crowd that was outside, I think even in the civic center, we would have been beyond capacity of the people to be able to meet in that space. So some people still would have been outside, not as many. Anything else on this topic before we move on? All right, the next item is the vehicle parking code amendments. Just given the time and where we are, this is the first time that you're seeing this draft code amendment. One of the, the considerations is to refer this to a committee. The appropriate committee would be either admin, because it's a develop, it's a code change, municipal code change, or public works, because it deals with on-street parking. Does the council care which committee that goes to? The earlier committee would be admin, because they meet at the end of this month. If you send it to public works, it would be the end of October. Want to go to admin? All right, we'll send this to admin. So we'll go ahead and do that, and then that's all my reports, Mayor.
Next item is the second reading of ordinance, is ordinance number 1886.
All right, this is an ordinance amending Dallas City Code Section 2.6 by O and 2.655 relating to emergency management operations.
Okay, I declare ordinance number 1886. Pass the second reading, and it'll be placed on for final passing. Secretary will call the roll.
Council President Schilling?
Yes.
Counselor Adams?
Yes.
Counselor Bariantos?
Yes.
Counselor Briggs?
Yes.
Counselor Collins?
Yes.
Counselor Fitzgerald?
Yes.
Counselor Jants?
Yes.
Counselor Shane?
Yes.
Counselor Verden?
Yes.
Ordinance passed.
Thank you. Next item is resolution, resolution's number 3514.
So this resolution is a resolution naming the former Dallas senior center space in the Dallas Public Library, the Grace Scattered Day Room. There's good information regarding Grace. She was a longtime volunteer in the Dallas community. She is just getting ready to relocate herself across the country to live with family. And so we'd like to have this resolution passed, and then there will be a small ceremony later this week. I'm looking at, is that right, Mark?
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow, ceremony tomorrow at nine o'clock, so. The pressure's on to approve this resolution so that we can honor Grace. She has done tremendous things for the, tremendous things for the community, both her and her husband, but this is a way to honor and recognize her. So staff recommend approving the resolution.
Is there any discussion? Secretary, please.
Counselor Adams?
Yes.
Counselor Bariantos?
Yes.
Counselor Briggs?
Yes.
Counselor Collins?
Yes.
Counselor Fitzgerald? Counselor Jants? Counselor Shane?
Yes.
Counselor Verden?
Yes.
Counselor President Schilling?
Yes.
Passed.
I declare that resolution 3514 is passed by unanimous vote. Any other discussion for tonight? Well, we'll close this meeting, and we'll open up our other meeting, or whatever it is.
Urban renewal.
Urban renewal, I knew that.
You're wel, you're welcome to stay if you'd like, we're going to talk about, so we closed the council meeting, we're now in an urban renewal meeting to talk about the downtown urban renewal district, but you don't have to stay if you don't want, so. It's really not allowed, but if you want to, Emily, can you give her my card? And then we can connect and talk about that, that'd be great.
I'll open up the urban renewal agency board.
Thanks, that's right.
Roll call, excuse Deborah.
Okay, Deborah's excused. We use the call, roll call from the other meeting.
All right, I think we're good for everyone else.
Approve the amendments of the August 21st, 2023 Urban Renewal Agency Board of Directors meeting, I'll need a motion.
So move.
A second.
Move the second, any further discussion, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
As opposed. Next is resolution number UR 2023-03.
So this is a resolution adopting a city council approved amendment to expand the Washington Streetscape Improvement Project.
This is the one we discussed last time.
This is the one you discussed last time, which says for the Washington Streetscape Project, you're extending the boundaries to the eastern and western extents on Washington Street of the district.
If you adopt this tonight, the city council will take this corresponding resolution up to complete the amendment.
Yep.
Any discussion?
I move we adopt the resolution.
Don't need a motion, it's a resolution.
Can we do that yet?
Don't need, don't need a motion.
No, sorry, there's a motion included, but you don't need the motion. All we need, all we need is a roll call vote.
Okay, thanks.
You've heard the reading of the resolution, secretary call the roll.
Counselor Bariantos?
Yes.
Counselor Briggs?
Yes.
Counselor Collins?
Yes.
Counselor Fitzgerald?
Yes.
Counselor Jants?
Yes.
Counselor Shane?
Yes.
Counselor Schilling?
Yes.
Counselor Adams?
Yes.
For the record, those are all directors.
Directors, yes.
Motion, resolution passed unanimous. Next item is the update on 791 Main Street.
All right, I'll invite our economic and community development director, Charlie Mitchell, to come up.
You had to stay, poor guy.
It was like deja vu, last time we discussed this, it was at the end of a nice, long meeting as well, so.
Perhaps we just shouldn't have this topic on any future agendas.
You're a jinx.
Jinx is it, doesn't it? So, good evening, members of the Urban Renewal Agency. So once again, I just wanted to provide you with kind of an update on where we're at with this project. I know it's a very important one for you all and for the community, and so we want to continue to have dialogue on this project. Specifically, kind of wanted to let you know kind of what's going on now. It's included in the staff report, kind of what's coming up, and remind you again of kind of the timeline that we've roughed out for the, for the project. So we just wanted to check in and make sure that we're, we're tracking with where you want us to go in terms of next steps and kind of where we're at. We still have plenty of opportunity to, you know, deviate our course if you feel strongly one way or the other, or if you don't like the direction that we're going. But it's outlined in the staff report what our intent is and kind of the track we're going on. But we'll just say that due to some, I'll say, just staff capacity issues with, with our facility staff, the salvage operations are not going to go quite as quickly as we had originally anticipated, so it's going to take a little bit longer. Other than that, you know, everything's pretty much going according to plan. Other than that, you know, everything's pretty much going according to plan.
How much is a little bit?
How much is a little bit delayed?
A little bit longer, how much is a little bit?
Well, I don't know the answer because that's basically the, the communication I received from facilities. It's just that it's not going to happen as quickly as we had originally anticipated.
Got it.
Exactly what that delay is going to be like, I don't know yet. But I do know that the, today, I believe, the counter assembly, which is very large, from the bank building got moved to the aquatic center. That was like the big one.
Oh, it's there already?
Well, it was supposed to be moved today.
Okay.
Yes.
And this is due to staffing issues, not due to problems that we found with the building or with anything in it.
Correct, there's just, there's, yeah, there's other, there's been other pressing priorities for the facility staff that are taking priority over this project right now.
We really do like.
Everybody's leaving.
I know it doesn't feel like it. Every time you come talk.
Let's just go home.
I've got a question, just for clarification. I think I know the answer, but I want to appear it officially, so I'm not making it up. One of your first bullet under what's happening now is we've determined there are no hazardous materials in the building. I presume from the way that's worded, that that does not include any kind of brownfield assessment.
Correct, we're talking only about the building itself, which needed to be assessed before we demolish it because the demo, the demolition procedure would be very different and much more costly if there were hazardous materials in the building, notably asbestos, yes. So there, there is none of that. That's correct.
Any other questions for Charlie? Charlie, we appreciate your time and waiting so long. And we're excited, this slowdown is not really going to affect any of our other things that were going on as far as looking at what direction we're headed.
Correct, yeah, and this was all meant to kind of run concurrent tracks anyway. You can see that, you know, in the, in the, kind of the schedule. So I don't anticipate it's going to dramatically derail the, the timeline. And I've been saying from the beginning with this project is, you know, we're setting the timeline. We need to take our time and do it right. And I think you heard that on another topic tonight as well, so that's our theme for the year, take our time and do it right.
I just want to say for the record that, that this, from the moment you started putting this plan together, you guys have done a great job. This is thorough, it is comprehensive, it's well thought through, and I don't think you missed anything. This is good staff, really, really good staff.
We're at the tip of the iceberg, so I appreciate your support.
We'll try and make sure you are shorter meeting from now on.
I was just disappointed that we weren't invited for a party when they removed the steel structure.
Oh, yeah.
That happened in the dark of night, you know, nobody saw.
You know what I mean, see if they purposefully, you would have had 500 people there.
Cheering, would have sounded like they did downstairs.
It did actually happen on a weekend though, I will, I will admit that.
Well, just two quick things, on that, on that particular issue, the steel structure, my wife's been complaining about that since we moved here. And I drove her past it and like three times and said, hey, you know, see anything about the bank? Still there. And so, love, I love my wife, but when she noticed, she also was very happy. But I would say on the, on the repurposing of that building and using it for other things while we still have it, I don't know, I don't think Charlie mentioned this, but this week we're removing the circulation desk out of that, out of that space and moving over to the aquatic center, so.
I did mention that, I didn't, I didn't know what you were referring to.
That was just, that was such a wonderful, that was such a wonderful thing.
He said it was supposed to have happened today.
Well, I didn't, I didn't have, I didn't have visual confirmation of it. I was just told that it was going to happen.
It was, it was occurring this morning, which is a good thing, so.
Sorry, Mary, I let you in.
And, and we have a lot, and we have a lot more of that.
Gary can confirm that it happened, it's there.
Yeah, and, and we have a lot more of that going on, so.
Everybody done?
Yep.
Good night.